Any law, any, any law library, but that, they mostly use the law library.
Uh-huh.
Or they use one of the, uh, meeting rooms in, in City Hall, but most of the time it's the law library. When I had a meeting room.
Hmm.
I guess they intimidate me, but I go in the books and show them, you know, we right there and they like, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Bay. I'm like, yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
I go use they books. That's on the record.
Yeah, and we actually, all, every last one of those books, believe it or not, are, are revised versions of the originals.
Correct.
That we wrote. And when I say we, our ancestors wrote the originals of all of those books in the quote unquote law libraries. And then the, the modern ones came and they got everybody writing and typing. And, and rewriting everything to, to lower it to their status so that they could pretend while we were asleep to be the government. So...
Right, they, they pretend a lot. They, they pretend a lot and, and, and you know, even like where's your barcode? And you know, I know, I, I learned a couple, well mama taught me a couple tricks, you know, to get up in there, to get around that.
Uh-huh.
So, you know, is the right to know law? That's how you get up in there without an ID supposedly, right?
Uh-huh.
And once I get in there, you know, I go find books that I know that they're familiar with, that works in our favor.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
And then, you know, they come back with a, with a whole different tune.
Yeah. That's interesting.
I, I get in.
You have a wealth of wis- of wisdom to bring to the table. You have a wealth of wisdom. Just hearing those stories is causing our wheels to turn. And this, this is where, where your wisdom and our wisdom comes together. You know, you, what you've just explained is the workaround for what they use to, to bar people from things. What we have is the legal process that when you put the legal process that says you, we're going in there because it doesn't even belong to y'all. We know you're cust- you were custodians until we came. We know how to look at the process that they use to bar people from coming in. We know how to look at that process and then restate the process and elevate it up to the law, but put it in our favor. Which is a chess move in this whole thing. You know, yes, we, and so, so when, when, when we put what we have with what you have, with the information that you have. It is just powerful and unstoppable. Cause see, the right to know law is something that, I knew that in my spirit, but, but the concept with a title called the right to know law. I don't, I didn't, I'm not, I wasn't familiar with that. I just know we, we are the law, so we're gonna do what we do. But, uh...
I had no choice but to learn to work around. Even, I got the book, you ever heard of the, uh, The Moorish Empire and it's three volumes?
I have not.
Okay, well, there's a book called The Moorish Empire. It's, it's The Moorish Land, The Moorish Empire, that's up in the house, anyway. Uh, basically, I wrote to the NAVAL Law Library. And said, Marat, no, I'm not a bay, and the more sent it, I'm using a bay, and he didn't get it and I got it.
So, I see here online a link to that in the public library at the UK. I have, I see, I just pulled up a PDF of this book called The Moorish Empire. And I knew it was at UK. Justice Kansu, are you, are...
It's three volumes.
Okay, is Justice Kansu, are you present? Let me see, he may or may not be present. Cause he's at U- he's one of our, our congress members who's at UK territory.
Okay.
Um, I knew, so you, you, uh, the one who, the, the book that you're referring to. Can you, do you know who the author of the book was? So that we have, see if we have the same one?
I got a picture in my phone. Hold on, let me see if I can, uh, let me see on my other phone, can I see? It's three volumes.
Uh-huh.
And like I said, most of the time, I write to the, the law lib- the war law library.
Hmm, the war law library?
Yeah, I get a lot of information from them, yeah.
Where are they? What is that? Where, where are they?
Uh, I think one in, one, one in Charleston and one in DC, I believe. It been, it been years, but I, I, I can always get stuff from them.
Wow.
And they, they send it to my house with some gloves. And you know, it, it's, it's pretty old books, but that's how I get it. But like I said, you can't, one more try to get it without being a bay, and it, it didn't work. But I, I got them. Every time, every time I write, write to them, I get them.
Okay, so there is, uh, if, if you, if you can see the screen, I'll, uh, I, I have something on the screen that might be what, what you're referring to. Let me just, let me just pull it up so maybe you can...
The PDF version. That's the PDF version, cause I read before I got it.
Uh-huh. Uh-huh.
But there's, uh, there's, uh, there's a three volume of that. There, there's three volumes of that.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's like seventeen hundred dollars.
But, but is this the right one?
But, yeah, that's the right one, but there's three versions of it.
So, the seventeen hundred dollars, we, we have that in Moorish, you know, in our money. Uh, and our money is honored everywhere. So we can, we can send the money to get the book. We just have, it's just, now, let me tell you the difference between when, when, when Moors order things sometimes, they use the wrong address. And when I say the wrong address, there are little nuances in the address that when they see the mail come in and it's addressed a certain way, they know that it's coming from the, from us, from the higher ups. And when I say higher ups, all of us are higher ups. You, me, we all are higher ups. We're the government. We're the highest. So, uh, for those who are at Congress, let me go ahead and put this, this link in the chat. So you can, uh, take a look at that on your, when you have your, uh, moment to do so. Yes, indeed. Uh... Now, this book...
Okay, it look like this. Let me see if I can show it to you, uh, let me see if I can put my camera on.
Okay, just a moment.
Uh, let me see. Let me see.
Great to see your face, also nobility.
Yeah, it look like this. It's three volumes. And they look, there, there's two green and one blue.
I can, if you move it just a little bit to the left, we'll see if we can, okay. Okay, okay. Uh, I can't see it. The...
Can't see, let me see. Okay, what about now?
Let me see if I can put that on the screen here. Uh, pull it back just a little bit so that it can be in focus. We can see it, but it's just a little bit out of focus. Nineteen ninety-nine, let me see the words at the bottom, nineteen ninety-nine to nineteen oh-two. The Moorish something, The Moorish...
Hold on, let me, let me look.
Is that, is that eighteen ninety-nine to nineteen oh-two?
Yes.
Yeah, eighteen ninety-nine to nineteen oh-two.
Empress Light, greetings. This is King L letting you know that I have joined the meeting. Sorry if I missed anything for being late.
Uh, Islam, gr- great to have you here, nobility. Uh, okay, so, so Justice, uh, Amazai, let, let's, let me see. Uh, eighteen ninety-nine to nineteen oh-two. Moorish Empire. Let's see if it, ah, it came up. Okay.
Yes.
Uh, I'll pull it up and, pull it up and put it on the screen. Wow.
Yeah, so I, I, I went through that book and I'm like, I'm like, oh, these Moors have no idea.
So, The Moor, Land of the Moors and The Moorish Empire. That's the name of the book, y'all.
Right, and, and the reason why I, 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 I sought that book out is because I was like, I'm like, okay, well, you know, if I can get around these Moors, I better not have to study, right?
(laughing)
I, I'd rather bring some value. I'd rather bring some value. So, if we're gonna go to our custom and tradition, well, how, how was the government, uh, established? What did they wear? What did they eat? What was the, the real officers? You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Quote unquote. So that's what I use that as a reference to go look up other information. But like I said, when you get, when you, uh, ask the, uh, the law library, uh, the war law library, they send them volumes to you with white gloves and a book is like, oh, ancient. And I said, you know, when I get a chance, I would like to buy the volume, you know, the whole thing.
Okay, well, oh my word, I'm, let me just absorb that for just a moment, thinking about the law library. These law lib- these law libraries that you're referring to, cause there are different levels of law library. There are different levels of them, and Moors, that's something that we all, uh, we all must know about, about who we are, is tho- the different levels of law library is, i- i- it works like this. There's the federal law libraries where you go to DC and you go to those law libraries. It's, it's usually in a federal building. And they're gonna have information on the Moors, the gov- the way of, of government of us, how we governed over them. It's gonna have these books and things. Then there is the university, colleges and universities level. Now, let me say this, the HBCU colleges, the historically black and the, the historically black colleges and universities, that's what, HBCU, don't go there. They don't have nothing. They took everything out of those, cause blacks ain't supposed to have that. But you will go to ye- the, the Ivy League colleges, Yale, Harvard, Princeton, to their law libraries. And you'll find the information over in a dusty corner, or they may even have it behind the librarian, where you have to actually request the books. Then there's another level, is the Catholic churches and the big dioceses and things, they all have a library in their church. They all have them. Those have United States stuff and Vatican stuff and Catholic stuff. Even the small churches have, have, with, with a library, has those books. And they're all gonna be pointing, right? Our faces are all throughout the books. Um...
It's funny you said that.
Mm-huh.
I, I've been to all of them.
Yeah.
Including one at, uh, uh, Pittsburgh, Saint Benidormore.
Yeah.
(laughing) Yeah, the Moors freaked out, like they literally, oh, the churches was closed, right? Their libraries closed.
Mm-hmm.
And I've been with, uh, a group of Moors, twenty or more, they'll tell the story. These people broke their neck to open the door and it was closed.
Hmm.
Like there's somebody there all the time, but they was closed. And it was like, oh, brother Bay is here, come on, open the door, y'all want refreshes and stuff, like, yeah, so...
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. I've been to all, almost to all of them, even to one in Tennessee.
There's a, hmm, there's another level of library also, and this one I've been to here, uh, is the, is the Masonic lodges. I don't, and, and this, this library that I went to, it was at the Grand Lodge, Grand Masonic Lodge of Washington. I went there, it was all hybrids in the building, all hybrids, and the building was locked, and you had to either look like us or have a password to get in. And when, and when they show, when they, they have, cause they have a camera at the door. And when you push the button, your face pops up on the screen. And I just, I just said, uh, uh, I just, I stated that I, I, I wanted to come in and, and, and look around. That's what I said, I want, and this was years, this was before we started doing court actions. I said I wanted to come in and look around, and they just opened the door and, and took me straight downstairs to the library, downstairs. And the library had all these books, dusty books that we, that we are gonna have scribes restating. But there are many diff- our, our information is hidden everywhere, and it's not really hidden. It's just at those kinds of places that we wouldn't think to go to if we working a nine to five job and, and doing all this other craziness, you know? So...
Islam.
Yeah, Islam.
It's interesting, um, when I activated that link and went inside and looked at the, uh, presentation of the books and the price.
Mm-hmm.
The link to it, it's just amazing. Of course, two hundred forty-five for just two of the books.
Yeah.
Okay, which says something about the value.
Yes.
Given that price.
Yes. That is why we had to have our own money system and then start exercising our, that, that, that peace. So, because the, in the Bible, it says, uh, buy the truth and sell it not. Buy the truth and sell it not. But we can't use their stuff or you won't get the truth. We have to use our own money. That's what fiduciary money and things like that, we could put fiduciary money in our government envelope and send the order and they will send the books. Because they, that, that information is our information. You know? So, uh, Justice Amazai, this is, is so valuable, so valuable. Thank you for bringing your gift to the table, and we, we hope we have, uh, things to... Our, our biggest gift to the nation from our perspective is, is threefold. Number one, it's the courts. Number two, it's the money, and number three, it's restating everything. Those are our three, to me, from what I can see, that where people are getting their, their greatest remedy is creating their own documents and identifications and using them. And when they use them, the system honors what they do.
Okay, okay. Well, I got some, some more to unpack.
Yeah.
If you allow me.
Uh, Islam, there was someone else, uh, who was going to say something also, or ask the question.
Okay, I am.
Uh, just one moment, Justice Amazai.
Islam?
Islam.
I, I just wanted to say that I put I put in the, on the chat, the link to all three of these books to download.
Okay, thank you, nobility. Uh, let me see. Oh, that's, that's that archive that we...
Empress Light.
Islam, nobility.
Islam, praises and honors you for everything that has been given prior to me, um, coming onto the floor. I just wanted to say hi, thank you, and continue pouring us, pouring into us like you have. I'm riding with a gentleman right now that is, um, from the lineage of the Comanche tribe. And when he heard your voice, he picked up the DeLorean that is sitting on his, in his car's middle piece and waved it in the air. He had no clue what I was, what type of meeting I was getting on or anything. He just heard your voice and picked up the DeLorean and waved it in the air.
Where'd he go?
Uh, there is a sound, and first let me, let me send high honors, uh, to you first and foremost, nobility, and, and then to, to, to he who is with you.
His name is John.
John, Islam, thank you so much, John.
I have my camera on. I'm, I'm, while we at a light, I'm flashing him on the camera so you can see him.
Oh, don't do that.
(laughing)
Islam, nobility, thank you so much for all that you're doing, and we, we, we appreciate John as well.
Yes, ma'am.
We appreciate John as well, indeed. Um, the link, Moors, to this, uh, archive, Justice Nathan just put it in the chat for these, these books. The PDF for these books that, uh, and let me just click on it just to be sure. Um, let's see, that it will, be sure that it will open on my...
I'm downloading it now. It is openable. I confirmed it is.
Oh, good, good. Uh, hopefully...
It'll take a minute to download though.
Yeah, uh, it seems like it's a pretty, pretty hefty amount of information.
Yes.
Um... Yeah, it's, uh, so, I, I will say this, Moors. Uh... We know, we, everyone knows who we are. We just, we just, it was our job to know who we are. It was our job to do that, and no one could tell us. We had to do it ourselves. Now, the, uh, one of the, one of the purposes of this meeting is regarding the commerce and trade and exchange. Um, where things like cannabis and crops and, uh, goods and services. Uh, we're, we're looking at activating and continuing to activate the supply lines and the finance and the banking uh, for, for our commerce, because there are, um, there are goods and services that each and every one of us will be taking advantage of on our land and producing. So, Justice Amazai, uh, you mentioned something about, uh, two hundred acres that you all have and, and some other things that you have. This, what I'm about to say is for everyone, no matter what, how, how many resources you have at your, at your, uh, fingertips, they must be restated. The paperwork that was used to gain that, uh, property or whatever it is, it has to be national paperwork, is what I'm saying. It has to be national paperwork so that the right government is over it, and that government is you. You were, you were given access to those resources so that you could govern them, not just use them. So that you could govern them and tribute them out to the people and have steady commerce. You have income coming in, and then you have, uh, product going out. And so that's what each and every one of us is, is here to do. Justice Amazai, do you know the process for packing and shipping? What, the, whatever it is, the cannabis, do you know the process where you don't have to use fiat to do that? Cause we know that process. We've, we've done that process with Seesaw.
All the way, we, I got another more that, uh, basically, he takes care of it at. And I wanted him on the call so he can explain, explain that, but, uh... I think so, and I, I don't think so, but everything about that, that particular property, it has to be restated because...
Yeah.
Uh, the way that property was obtained and the way, you know, there was like, uh, cultivation license and all of that stuff.
Yeah.
You know, so, yeah, everything has to be restated. Now, it's a, it's, it's a hundred acres of commercial, and then it's a hundred acres of agriculture.
Okay.
And then on, on, on the, 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 uh... On the agriculture...
Yeah.
There's forty acres set aside for Moors.
Mm-hmm.
To build homes. And what, what we initially did for the program is, we do got like, uh, I wanna say, seven acres of just cannabis, like, right now.
Yeah.
And like I said, there's licenses and all that's going on. And what we wanted to do was, we wanted to give Moors jobs there. But, uh, we was building a structure so they won't have to get hotels. So that's two hundred acres, right? So, yeah, everything has to be restated with that.
Yeah, yes, so that, see, the ones that are issuing the licenses don't really have the authority to do it. But they're, they're giving you an example of how to do it. That's what the process is about. They're showing you how to issue your own licenses, cause they don't have the authority to issue them. So whatever it is that they issue that, that was exchanged for fiat, what we do is, we restate that. And then ish, and use our created versions of that. And then we notify those who sent the examples, that we have our own license, licensing, uh, available. That's how we do it. And, and, and what we do is nationalize the, whatever logo or, you know, whatever that city or state is using as their logo. We nationalize the logo by, by adding some red to it or changing it just a little bit, and then we notify them. And we take, we, for example, if the state, if the, if the cannabis is in state of North Carolina, then when we restate the, the, the certificate or the license, when we restate that license, what we do is we just, uh, we, we just put Caroline, North Carolina up there, not state of, because that's not really the land. State of is not the land. North Carolina is the land. And so when we put North Carolina, but it's issued, but there's always a fiduciary affidavit from the Moorish National Republic Federal Government that goes with that. That way, the license is more to the land. Because licensing indicates commerce. That means that there's some water or the sea or admiralty involved or maritime involved. And you always want to pull the, uh, whatever license it is, that license has to be restated and attached to or more to the land. That way, uh, if there's any issues that happen, court is not held at sea, it's held on the land. By us, you know? And that's just a matter of, 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 of Moors recreating things. So, uh, we would love to, uh, either, we can, we can do this several different ways in terms of what you're doing.
Okay.
If...
Also, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead, nobility. Go ahead, nobility.
Also, and that, that's in upstate New York, right? That's in upstate New York.
Okay. Okay.
And then in, uh, I believe in Oklahoma, we have a warehouse and a manufacturer. Well, we have national products for Moors. They, it's just for Moors. Uh, we've been working on these for years, uh, we had a gag order for like twelve years for this. Most of all your, uh, TVs and televisions, Moors hold the patents already, you know? Uh, in that regard, in their system. Moors, you know, most of it, like even the wifi, we work with the Moors, the more that, uh, rediscover wifi, right? So we have cell phones, uh, we got washing machines, we got dryers for Moors now.
Mm-hmm.
To open up shop for us to sell like national products. Uh, we have, uh, drones, we have three D printers, we have, uh, electrical, uh, motor, motorcycles.
So, here's my question about that. Because with this question, we can get things moving in terms of the merchandise getting out to the Moors. My question is this, if I willed to have a cellphone or two or three or four or five hundred, and I willed to get them from you, how would we do that? What process do you have in place, or it, or do we, cause whatever process it is, generally, we would restate that process back and then, uh, make the agreement that way?
Well, it, it's the regular purchase order, that, that's, that's like I said, the old, the old system.
Yeah, can we...
The reason why we, we haven't moved them
Mm-hmm.
is because we got, we wanted bodies and capable qualified Moors to come on board. We, you know...
Okay.
It, it's to the, it's to the fact that we have our own, uh, cloud system, our own internet system, our own operating system, our own laptop. Um, if the power go down, we got something that's called, uh, what do you call it, uh? What's, what's the layman's term, uh?
Probably a backup generator?
No, it's not, it's not that. It's a flex capacitor. It's a flex capacitor.
Okay, okay, okay.
And that flex capacitor, it look like a VCR, right?
Mm-hmm.
That, that can power your whole house. Like we got a, a lot of that in the warehouse.
So...
Already.
Okay, so, so, so we have established that you all have all of this merchandise that Moors will to have.
Right.
Now, between you all and us, let us focus on working out how to move that stuff. For example, I don't have a cellphone, uh, I have plenty of cellphones, but I don't have a cellphone that I use right now because, uh, I, I'm looking to do it where, where the contracting is, is proper and lawful. And there's lawful exchange on the public record, gold, silver, Moorish sovereign de Larian, okay? That is what we are looking for, and we're not willing to compromise to get that. So, how do we get, uh, so what documentation? Cause I know you said that you all are using that o- o- old system. If, if you would give me, uh, let me, point me to the website to order it or whatever, because we can always pull that information, restate it, and mail it, mail it to the warehouse to, to, to get.
I, I would definitely, I would definitely, I, I'll be able to send it to you. I can't send it to you on this platform, cause I'm afraid it's gonna hang me up, but I can, I can, I can get that to you.
Um, okay, okay. Uh, this platform won't hang you up. It won't hang you up.
Oh, it won't?
No.
Okay, hold on, we'll give it a second.
Okay.
And like I said, the, the reason why we didn't, what we was gonna do is set up businesses and let the Moors work in them, right?
That is what we are doing too. So we're all on the same page with that. We're all on the same page.
Right, so let me, let me, let me, let me, let me get this.
Okay, and while you're doing that, uh-huh, while you're doing that, um, is it a link that you put in the chat?
Uh, let me see if it'll allow it.
It will.
Okay.
On, on this, uh, platform, it will, it will do that. Um, and, and again, we'll, we'll work, work through. Cause see, that's really what, what a lot of this is about too, is us working through any issues that we have. Cause see, that's really what, what a lot of this is about too, is us working through any issues that we have, uh, where, whether it be communication issues, whether it be whatever, we just work through them without compromise. We, we're not gonna bend and bow to, uh, to some hot mess, you know, just to get things done. We can mesh the two together and then restate everything. All we doing is looking at your processes, uh, and then, let's see if we can, if we can access it.
That's, that's one of them. Let me get the other one.
Yeah, it worked. This is a beautiful website.
Yeah. And also, uh, I got a Moorish network, um, with, uh, uh, Roku. But with this system that you seeing right now, every app, whatever, whatever app is out there, whatever platform is out there, within this platform, we can create. We, we, we could definitely create.
Okay.
Like processing, all, all of that. Whatever, whatever, you know, whatever, whatever governments have to run their government, this platform does it for moors. It, it, it does everything.
So, uh, Dr. Lael Alexander, I see he's, he's here, Dr. Lael Alexander. Um,
Let me get the, the website for you. Uh,
Is it, 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 it should say New World Solutions, right?
Which one?
The one, the first link that you sent, New World Solutions, web three applications. Uh, Silo brings the power to the people in this digital age. Okay.
And let me see the other one. I think, I don't know why it's like this, but the other one is, uh, let me see.
So,
Give me a second. Let me find it for you.
Do you understand the, the backend or inner workings of, 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 of what he's talking about here with regard to blockchain as a service?
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. That's what I'm saying. We provide everything. We, we, we all good to go for, on, on, on every aspect. We got our own blockchain, our own servers. If they was to stop right now, moors would be running up with their own internet. If they cut the power off, moors would get power ASAP.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and definitely the blockchain, we, we definitely got our own blockchain. And then we got another sister that works with that to show you how the data form that and how to tokenize, uh, basically treasury, wha- whatever, she know how to tokenize all that, she know how to form all that. And turn any device where, you know, in a fo- a forming device, or tokenize it.
Yeah.
Like you can tokenize the delarium if you want.
Yeah. And, and, uh, with tokenization, we would be able to go back and forth between each other's phones and things like that to, you know, sending delarium, uh, uh, one to one. They say person to person.
Right, right. And, and also when we restate it, we put it on the blockchain, you know? That's that, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
Islam?
Islam.
Brother, do you by chance know, um, oh God, what's this brother's name? Um, shoot, his name just disappeared out of my mind.
Yeah, can, can you all, is that something you, you all could talk about offline Nobility?
No, cause it's related to this.
Okay, okay. Thank you, okay.
Um, the brother who started a blockchain, um, under the World Credit Union. And he seems to be very knowledgeable, but my problem with him and why I part a company with him is he was part of the,
And see, that's kinda why we didn't really wanna go, go there. We didn't real, we don't really, that's not really relevant to, you know, why you all parted company is not relevant. And I kinda had a feeling it was going that way. Uh, I know who you're speaking about. I believe it's Justice Lamont.
No, not. Never mind.
Okay. Uh, we, yeah. So Noble Phoenix, the, 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 the circumstances are not important, but the process is. So please speak on, on, on process, on process and how we can come together with the processes. That's all I'm trying to say Noble Phoenix, is, is let's, let's, let's stay on the processes so that,
Well, that's what I was trying to say. You didn't let me get to it, but never mind. That's okay. I'll, I'll hold off until he gets finished.
Okay. Cause you were going into the direction of why y'all part a company, but, but I, we really wanna stay on this. Um, so, uh, Justice Amazai, this is a great, uh, website. I see in the corner, uh, down at the bottom, Silo Headquarters. Uh, so this is, this is good information. This is good information. Was there another link?
There, there, the rest of them, I don't know. They're, they're, uh, internal on Instagram.
Okay.
Uh, and then it's the back office. I don't know why, uh, it's, it's a reason why they, you know, we, we, we really don't, you know, put it in open to all moors into our, like I said, we wanted to buy these.
Yeah.
You know, before we, uh, but I, I'll show you some pictures. I don't, I don't know if I can share pictures in here.
You probably can. If there's a link to the pictures, you probably can.
Oh, I can. Okay, cool.
Yeah.
Okay, cool, cool, cool. Well, in, 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 in any who, um, we, we do have national products and we, we wanted to figure out a way where we can actually get competent moors that was on board and, uh, use these for national products.
Yes.
Basically, to get the economy up and get us, get these moors away from, uh, working for, uh, other people that's not themselves. At the, at the same time, until we went online, because we got the capability of creating every platform, we went ahead and got a Roku channel and Roku, uh, I'm the only Moorish, uh, I sent all my credentials to them that's on a, a planet within that platform of Roku.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, and the reason why, I had a hundred and eighty-five K followers on Instagram. Off the board, they tuck that account. So I said, you know what? Screw this. So I went on, I went on Roku and did that and made it like a TV network. So it's like a Netflix. So I'm like, okay, so we can broadcast news. Yeah, but just call a number.
Okay.
You can just call a number on, you can just, yeah, you can just call a number, brother. All right, pardon me. But, um, so I did, I did that and I said, hey, moors, if y'all got any content, Moorish content or your news channel, because the prophecy said what? The presses are powerful too.
Yeah.
And I'm like, the temples don't have newspapers. So I'm like, okay, cool. We can give moors jobs like this too. Present shows, you know, off center, what they are, the content that they used to send, but give them Moorish culture content.
Mm-hmm.
So that's the TV network.
So this is, this is what I'm, what I'm seeing as far as the next steps in us coming together so that, so that those that you know who are doing the businesses can have not only a customer base, but they can have, um, court, the, the proper courts and government structure. Cause see, they're, they're the government too.
Yeah, that's what I explained to them.
Dr. Lael Alexander is, is the government too. I'm looking right at him.
Right. So, so what, what happened is when, when I get these moors, I don't keep them on a basic level. I try to bring them up to par as, as myself. And I'm like, look, okay, I know you doing this, but the reason also why I'm doing a TV network is I wanna root out all these businesses and advertise them so I can put y'all in one place, right? And you know, the business owners I talk to, I say, listen, you're gonna have to change everything you do. Because you can look me up and it'll say, uh, more, it, it, it'll say Moorish or it'll say Amazai Bay on everything. Uh, but I know I have to restate it, but I did it my way.
Yeah.
And, and they did it. But what I'm saying is, I already told them, I'm like, look, we need the courts. And that's important because they have courts, right? So we need our courts, right?
Yeah. And we have them. We are the court. Yeah.
Right, right. But this is what I'm prior to meeting y'all guys already.
Yeah.
What I'm saying is I already know which way is to go. So, you know, the moors I've been talking, I'm like, look, this what it is. So we, I'm like, we got this in New York, we got this in Oklahoma. I'm in North Carolina. And I'm asking moors to, hey, you know, I got a group of moors that's coming together and actually operate as a community, as moors. Just prior to me, you know, I've been studying y'all for like, uh, I wanna say four months.
Yeah.
Uh, so just why even, you know, contact. I, I do my due diligence, so.
Yeah, we're so glad. We, cause we do too. We're so glad. So we are one there, that's for sure.
Right, right. So that's what, that's what I'm going. So I got a group and I'm pretty, uh, I got a name and a movement. So that's to combat that, because I was, I went to the grand sheiks and I said, well, if grand sheiks is empowered to make law, what, what's the problem? And they go, oh, you start confusing. I said, no, I say, I just wanna stay in the religious realm. So my question is, if you're empowered to make law and interpret law, why don't you have religious courts? Where's your Department of Religious Affairs? Now, I know what you know, what all, everybody knows on how, how to do it, but that's my question. Because a lot of people don't know. And I'm, the moors that, that, that I'm influencing right now, they looking at this whole, they looking at it as y'all looking at it now. But to get them there, I had to go through that, you know?
You did.
To wake them up, you know, in, in a certain way, you know, to be like, look, yeah, I'm like, these grand sheiks supposed to be taking care, these grand sheiks supposed to, uh, create a title to your car because eight oh five says blah, 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 you know? Why is you going to these venues with this? They supposed to be giving you out business titles, blah, blah, blah. If, if that's the case.
Yeah.
And you know, that, so that's the perspective where I was coming from with, with these particular moors, you know? And I'm like, guess what? You know, I'm on a record with these colonists. They already acknowledged that I'm a sheik, blah, blah, blah. You know, I stated something on a record and I've been operating like that for over twenty years, you know? So nah, so with your, with your system of restating it, uh, I think it works fine. It's, it's the right time. Right, right.
And the banking.
That's another thing right now, okay? Because this sister, prior to meeting with you, she came up with a, a, a smart contract. And, uh, a smart contract, basically,
That's blockchain.
Right, with the blockchain, she was gonna use the CPU to do a smart contract to say, hey, I'm, I'm getting this car or this piece of land or whatever the case might be. This, this particular node or this particular CPU is gonna work it off and you give me the car right now. This prior to meeting you, this was being a system was working on. From normally, you know, with that, you know?
But wouldn't that, uh, based on my, my very limited, uh, understanding of CPUs and, and, and that blockchain thing, they have to track all the work that that computer is doing.
Well, it doesn't, the program does it by, it does it in the contract. With the smart contract, all of that's done for you, basically.
Yeah.
So it's basically say, okay, the car is worth ten thousand dollars, whatever. That CPU and that contract will pay, will form and issue that allocation, which that funds, whatever it is, into a wallet that goes straight to them until that contract is met.
Yeah.
That, that's the way we was doing it with the smart contract. Now, this before, you know, what I saw y'all guys doing, this is why we was going through it, to get around fiat.
Yeah.
Islam?
Islam, uh, I, Islam.
Well, um, what was going through my head hearing all of this wonderful news, logistics. Um, logistics as far as shipping, even logistics as far as a smart contract. Because logistics is what controls the, the beginning of the item's ending location, right? So if you don't have control over the logistics, then that means somebody else is controlling it. Whether it's through a package, through the ethers or whatever. So, um, that we have to get, well, I don't know if you have that already taken care of as far as like shipping and even, you said you have internet, but even that smart contract, if, if it's bouncing from, you know, somebody's mind here that she doesn't have control over to another mind there that she doesn't have control over, that means other contracts that are adhesion contracts have been made that is not nationalized. And so that's where it gets fuzzy.
You're talking, you're talking about physically?
Yeah.
Um, physically and or through the ethers, you know? Because when, you know, when the towers, each, each tower presents its own in it, I mean, um, contract. So you have to have control over, um, all of those different things and to make sure that, um, you don't have any adhesion as far as the contract.
What you're referring,
Interlopers, interlopers as well.
Yeah, you're, you're, she's, I believe, uh, Empress Angel, correct me if I'm wrong. I believe what she's referring to is the conveyance process by which something moves from one place to another. And making sure,
We, we got Grand Sheik Nature. He has a trucking company and I drive trucks also. And then we got two other moors that drives trucks. So we was gonna create, once we got, you know, some moors together and nationalized, right, the whole thing, we was gonna get trucks and we was, you know, we already got drivers.
Okay, so the, the licensing and things like that for the trucks by way of government, we do that. So we do all of, we do, uh, and I'm just, we're just, I'm just letting you know,
Oh, I'm up to par. I'm up to par with everything you're saying.
Yeah. Yeah, uh, any commercial driver's license, we issue those. And, and because we issue them using gold and silver, they cannot be infringed upon by those who do fiat.
I follow.
So, uh, insurance for the trucks, um, gold and, um, licenses, uh, CDLs and things of that nature, we can do all of that. Whatever insurance they're using, just bring us that documentation and we can restate that documentation and, and, and they're good to go. And we can even extend it out so that they don't have to keep going back and forth with insurance companies about insurance. Cause I know they're, I know truckers are having issues with that and with renewal of CDLs.
Well, prior to y'all, some moors, they just bond them.
Yeah. We, we, we do that too. Yeah.
Okay, okay. Now, I'm up to par with whatever you said, like what you saying? Like, I'm not, I'm not like, I'm with y'all guys. I'm on that. So I get what you're saying. So basically, everything has to be restated. Basically, that's what you're saying.
Yeah, yeah. And you all can do that also. So, so now my, my, um, thought process is how do we come together now to get the, the washers and dryers and all of that to the moors who, who, who will to have them? Because you got the trucks. You got the, you got the cell phones and stuff.
We got some trucks with grand chic nature. We got some trucks. We got some, uh, we, we probably need more, right?
Okay. We have more.
Uh, what I was saying was, okay, cool, cool. That, that's fine. Uh, what I was saying is, it, it's a goal for us. But what I'm saying is prior to y'all guys, like we, we got this. Where's the, we wanna put all moors. See what I'm saying? So we was like, well, we don't wanna just grab moors. So what we did was, I have a study to bring moors with skill sets, right? Great skill sets that didn't know there was more and bring them on board. That's what we was doing, you know? So, I mean, we could quickly bring them up to par though, uh, what you're saying. So all we gotta do is just, you know, come together and, and, you know, I'm the director of it. So we, we're on board with you. All we need to do is just work out how we do it. And, uh, well, basically not work out how we do it, just bring together what y'all already did and what we doing and just bring it up to par. That's it. Bring it up to standard, you know, with the restating. And, and, uh, just jumping over some, uh, little hurdles or whatever. But it, it's a goal for us.
It's a goal for us too, as well. It's a goal for us as well. Um,
Islam?
So there will be several meetings that we have along the way. Uh, Justice Shay Klein, uh, Bay, I believe, and then also Justice Nathan. And then there was someone else who had, who, who, Islam.
Islam, um, brother, um, you have a, you have to create a shipping and trading, freighting company and, um, make it sell them and then do a dollar charge upon the vehicles. To make, to sell the freight vehicles that you won't pay taxes and won't be pulled over with any injuries that you're doing. And majority of business to be, um, servant, which is, you know, into the state. Create those contracts and dis- disclaimers. And create your, um, ship, when you do create your shipping and freighting training company, create your own rules and regulations that goes with it and your disclaimer. That's the C R of your business to, uh, T, to explain.
Okay, I didn't understand, uh, understand anything. Yeah, I didn't understand anything you said. Uh, don't get louder. In fact, if you would just pull away from your mic a little bit, maybe we can hear you.
A little thing for examples, right? Then you do a shipping and trading and freighting agreement for his company or for the moors company that trade with him or everybody that trade on the one umbrella. So that makes a master. So, then master, a master, as a master, um, a, a code for everyone under your umbrella.
Okay, so, you're talking something, you're, he's talking about master accounts under one, uh, one u- umbrella? That's what he's talking about? Ma- but that's something we can talk about on down the road, because-
Yeah, I follow, I follow what he's saying, though, we, it, it's called Mars, and that represent Mo- Moors and Associates.
Yeah.
And right now, we have, uh, we're right now, we in Kenya breaking ground. So, I know, I know what the brother's talking about. Yeah, we, we can't do that though, brother, to make, make an agreement, we can't do that though.
Justice Nathan, I believe, or was it, there was someone, another justice? Islam.
Yeah, that's the whole purpose of what it's to nationalize it, you know, just for the Moors.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, um, 'cause I, I was listening about the, I wanted to go back to that blockchain part, uh, creating sign on blockchain, you know? Blockchain only works by the computer you have. So, if you have a computer that's not hooked up to the internet, you are the sole controller. So, like, how they got this blockchain now? The, the person that has the original computer that started the blockchain is the controller. So, it's not really all a hundred percent secure until we actually take over that original computer. Now, you can integrate yourself into the blockchain by, uh, creating your own computer, 'cause I heard he say they, they have their own laptops. You can take one laptop and make it a central computer by hooking it up to the, to the other mainframe, which is the main central computer, like how they hooked it up, because all it is is coding. Once you, uh, do the coding, you can code it how you want it. It, you could code it just like how you, how you, uh, code your own, when you set up the, um, the process of it.
Pardon me, th- th- all this is a private server, private everything.
Yeah.
We own everything, even the server, the cloud system, uh, everything. And it, yeah, instead of, well, you could come in and you know how to do that, we, it's the system works for Moors to come in and code if need be, you know, other, other, uh, other applications,
Uh-huh.
other security things, that's what it's, it's made for. But this is a, a private, like I said, we had a gaggle for twelve, for twelve years. So, basically, like, you know how government has their own blockchain, they private everything, they private system processing?
Yeah. Yeah.
We have that, that's what I'm, that's what I'm telling you, brother, we, we have that.
Okay. So, let me, uh, for the Moors that are here on this call, who may or may not understand what he just said about them having a private server, let me explain what a private server is, 'cause you might even have one in your garage right now. A private server is nothing more than, you know, when computers first came out, they had these towers, right? See, don't feel left out of nothing that's happening right here, because we all got the, we got the tools already. They have these towers, they have these towers, these old towers, and I could bring you one right now, I could run, run around the way and get it and, and show you what that looks like. Uh, in fact, let me do that.
Islam Noble Tonis, I see you with your, your money, flashing your money, Islam Noble.
Our money, what are you talking about, that's all of our money.
I know, but I see you with it.
Islam.
Billions, we've got billions.
I affirm, I affirm.
Um, I have here, any, any one of you, because I know some of y'all got them, I know you got them old computers from when computers first came out, and I know they still work, they just made software that, that made them obso- seemingly obsolete, but they still work. Uh, let me-
I have an old Mac, uh, tablet.
Okay, hold on for just a moment, let me, let me, let me unshare my screen so that you all can see what, what I'm talking about here. It's one of these, just an old tower. Can you see that?
That is a floppy disk? Or is that a CD-ROM?
No, it's a floppy disk.
Oh, my goodness, I know a floppy disk.
And, uh, it, it also has, I, I am, I know I am, uh, it also has, uh, floppy disk and it has both floppy disk
Oh, my God.
and, um, CD-ROM.
And hard drive disk.
And hard drive disk. Now, the thing about these is-
I'm, I'm not that old, lol.
I know you can't, I know you didn't just explain to us the whole thing. But listen to me, if you have this, these are, are unhackable, to be honest with you, 'cause when you disconnect them from the internet, they're not wireless. So, you can't wirelessly get into it, you can't, it's, it's, that's why they made them obsolete. That's why they did that, okay? So, if you want to see-
They wanted to create a war, that's when you remove that and you make it, so, see, people can hack it, that's a war mechanism to create money, create fear, and then we watched that video that you put on the Congress yesterday about them, the, the, um, Southlandite saying he got hacked on his, his account
Yeah.
and all that business. See, if they had the operations with that type of hardware, then there would have been no hack.
Would have been no hack. It's, it's unhackable, you can't hack that. And all governments, and, and let me just say this about that. Hillary Clinton had one of these that she took over to Ukraine, and that's what started this big mess. They kept talking about computers and emails and all of that stuff in that enactment, that's what started the mess. She took that over there, the SWIFT system works off one of these. The SWIFT sys- system is only, all it is, is some of these hooked together and operating together, that's all it is. And, and, and when you turn off the internet, ain't nobody gonna be going in no back door trying to get to this thing, because they can't, it, it, you can't do it.
Islam.
Islam.
That, and that's what I was speaking about. They have a old computer, just like old tower, just like yours, running the blockchain on the new system. All they added, all they did was connect the old computer to another laptop to, to go on to online, so everybody else could connect. They only communicated with one laptop, from the original tower that they started the blockchain. That's why I said, at our home, by having our own tower, like the brother said, and have a central computer, and then that'll be our central computer, and we could program all our laptops to that central computer, to, to, um, access it. It's like a communication.
It is.
That's all it is.
And, that is also how we can do phones and everything else, 'cause did you know? And, and I mentioned this about six or seven Congresses ago, I mentioned this specifically, because I read it and I saw it, that the, that the quote-unquote Federal Reserve has, it only operates off of two of these, two of these. They have all their information, but they just keep attaching, um, um, mobile, RAM, what do, what do we call the, 'cause I got a couple of them too, uh, the extra memory. It's a little square extra memory, it's called a portable something.
It's, it's a portable hard drive.
Yeah.
So, these, it's, it's memory banks.
Yeah.
So, I buy these all the time, because I could detach this from my computer with all the information I have on it. Every time I hook it to my computer, I can pop up anything, and this is the same thing, this is the safest way to keep your money on.
Yeah.
Like, if you, your ledger, you would keep it on this.
Yeah.
And you would walk around, every movie shows you that.
Yes.
Every movie, some spy movie, they show you they got, what, a disk or a little, a, a hard drive, where they connected to any computer, with, when it has internet, that's how they know the central, whatever alphabet people would know, that you connected that piece to the computer, 'cause they monitoring it. So, it's very, electronics is very simple.
It's, it's so simple that it will confound the wise. People think we have to have a whole bunch of, uh, spectacular stuff, we just need the simple stuff. And we have it already, we don't even need it, we have it already. We're banking and all of that is confirmed. And see, and this is another thing, another thing about that piece. All of the records and the, the spreadsheets and the bank accounts that you see online are a mirror of what's on the hard drive. They mirror it up there, and when, when the exchanges come through, because you signed a contract and agreed to use that quote-unquote bank, they put that spreadsheet up there, you run your card, and all the merchants have agreed that they're going to be plugged into that main system also, and that's what makes everything instant. It, it takes it just a few seconds for it to go, for the, uh, information to go from the machine that they use, the reader, the card reader, to the internet, to the hard drive, and the hard drive will reflect it up on to the, as long as the hard drive is plugged up to the internet, you'll be able to see the reflection of those accounts. But when they say that the system went down and they're needing to do some maintenance, all they did was unplug that hard dri- that power, like what I just showed you, they just un, uh, disconnected from the internet and just looked through the files and, and make corrections and things that need to be made. So, banking is not, uh, that difficult. And when people say they have a private server, that's what they're talking about, usually. Some, a- and the cloud is the, is the portable hard drive.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. We, we got it even down to the size where we could take a, a regular UBS, uh, drive and turn it to a ledger and store everything the same thing.
Yeah. Yeah.
Like, i- in two seconds.
Yeah, and then you just keep it backed up on CDs or, or other types of Mo, you know, things that, um, that if you put a magnet next to it, it won't erase everything.
Correct.
You know?
Yeah.
So, uh, Justice Amzai, this is some valuable information, and I'm so glad the Congress is here to hear it. Very valuable.
Well, I appreciate the work you're doing.
Islam.
We, we, we here to just, you know, come together like you said, and, um, take it, take it to where we supposed to be, and, uh, prepare, basically, preactive and not retro.
Yeah. Yeah. Yes, indeed. Uh, Empress Angel?
Oh, yes, Islam. Um, so, next question is for manufacturing. Do you have something as far as manufacturing is concerned for like, um, um, processes like computers and/or machines or technology and stuff like that?
Yeah, at that factory, we have that even 3D printers, we got a whole manufacturer factory.
Wow.
Oh, so, so, um, 'cause somebody like myself, I have a, um, a patent, so I'm just, you know, in the soon, you know, to come, I'd, I would desire to get that back.
Oh, you welcome, it, it's, it's for all Moors, you welcome anytime. It's just, it's for Moors.
Yeah.
That's why we did it.
Well, I was just asking, you know, if you had that, you know, type of, um, you know,
Oh, yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
for infrastructure, stuff like that.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
3D printers, and also, well, with three, I thought about a 3D printer myself, I thought about getting one of those myself. Uh, but there's so many different kinds, and it depends on what you're printing and the materials that you're using and things of that nature.
Well, we got an industrial one, we, we also got an industrial one where we can manufacture temples, buildings, all of that.
Wow. 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 But it would matter, it, it would matter whether the building is limestone or wood.
Well, it's, it's up to the Moors.
Oh, they have natural ones too, too.
They have-
Let me ask you this, let, let, let me ask you this though.
Uh-huh.
Uh, how do y'all handle, I know you said you restated everything. I'm in the North Carolina area, and I'm looking for land.
Yeah.
So, how would I go about doing that?
So, what you would do is find all of the statistics and numbers and who's holding the contract on that land.
So, I'd like to look for the patent and all that, right, I don't have to go that deep, just go to-
No, you, not necessarily, you don't have to do the patent, not necessarily. If, if you know that there's one on it, it, it's easy to find, a patent is easy to find. I mean, I can pull up a patent right now on the-
Right, right, right.
The, on the, uh, Bureau of Management.
No, I'm asking, that's what you need, that's what you need?
No, uh, uh, no, go to the tax ass- go to the Tax Assessor website.
Uh-huh.
Pull up that parcel, if you know the parcel number, or if you know the address, pull that up on the Tax Assessor website, whatever you see there, restate it. Okay?
Oh, I got you.
And then when you restate that, then you have to go even further, we all do, and show that the land was paid for in a, in, with, according to the market value with lawful and legal money, and that's where our money comes in at. Uh, because you can, because the system recognizes Moors sovereign de lauriam. It recognizes fiduciary money. Uh, and it also recognizes our liens and things of that nature, 'cause we've, we've shown that to the Moors where we put a lien on the public record, and the, uh, the subjects in the office of city uploaded the lien and everything to the record for the pe- the piece of property, and the piece of property stands today as we have stated. So-
And so, so we leaning to get it, or we giving them, uh, 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 fiduciary funds for-
So, so this is how, this is how it works. The lien, the purpose of a lien is to show who's the debtor and who's the creditor where that parcel is concerned. See, whoever is holding the, the lien on the land is the holder in due course.
I follow you.
So, we must show that we are the ancient holders in due course, and that's of all land, but, but all law is specific, so you specify that land piece right there. And then when you do a lien, first you do the lien in ancient English, and, and according to, you know, on Moors government letterhead at least. Uh, it doesn't necessarily have to be in ancient English, but it does need to be in red, in red ink or blue ink. Um, and then when you put, put the lien on Moors government letterhead, then you send proper notification. However, before you send proper notification for that, you could go ahead and do the rest of the process, which is to levy that land and whoever it is that's attempting to claim ownership, and then do a bond on the, on the land. So, the lien is to get rid of the Fiat piece. The levy is to say that the land is the property and the possession of you or your, your enti- whatever you're using. For example, if, if, if your company is, is claiming that land, or your, your kin, your family trust is claiming that land. Uh, and then the bond. And the bond is to, is to make it so that it joins the commercial system with the, whatever is gonna be issued. And it also protects the land and bonds the land to the actual physical earth and to the people. 'Cause when you look at bonds and the language that's on bonds, bonds are actually not about property, they're more about people than they are property. And so, if there, if there is a land patent, you would just restate it. If there is a, uh, and there's a, there's a link in the chat, Empress Rose L just put a link in the chat of a de facto land patent, all you would have to do is restate that land patent.
Got it.
And then you create a lodial title, a lodial title.
I follow you.
You know? And then, and this is, and this is what we do with land, just to, just to put, put the, you know, final nail in the coffin, is we issue, uh, we record it in either the Torrance system or the Tax Assessor system
Hmm, nah.
by restating the Torrance system. By restating the Torrance system and the Tax Assessor system, whatever that is. So, for example, with this domicile and this consulate here, uh, we're the Tax Assessor for, for this land. So, we nationalized the Tax Assessor website, uh, the, the logo, which happens to be Martin Luther King, who's a Moor anyway. But we, we, we changed the color of that logo to red or blue, depending on what we're doing. And then we put King County Tax Assessor. We, and, and we went even further, because where government is concerned, the government actually put constitutions and charters on the public record for King County, for Seattle, for, for, for Washington's, the state that is Washington, uh, and for the United States and for the States United and all of that. We, we've done all of that, um, already. And that's where government, that's the difference between doing government activities and individual activities, is that we're doing things from a, from the big picture. And then we, then we look at these other processes, like what we're talking about now, land. So, someone at North Carolina, I know we have Moors there who put the constitution on the public record, but it would actually be a good idea for you to put the county charter and the constitution for where that land is on the public record. But you must write it. You, you do it in red or blue ink? And then you put that with your land patent that you've restated, the title to the land, and then you show that you've used either gold, silver, or Moor Sovereign Delarion gold receipt as an exchange method to say that you purchased that land, and you can purchase the land from the United States, which is, which is us too. We're the, we're, but we're the creditor, United States, and not the debtor, so we don't accept fiat. We, because we, the, all of that debt is actually our credit. Restate it. You see? So, to simplify, to simplify all that, that we've, we've stated here, because when we look at things, we look at things from a, a complete and governmental perspective. But, but where you and that land is concerned, when you claim land, it is much safer for you to claim the land by stating that you're the fiduciary for the government and that the government is claiming the land for its use and for the people. That's where your protection comes in. And then you exercise eminent dominion over that land because you are of the bloodline and birthright.
So, that, that individual, that, that individual or whoever, company or supposed to be, uh, person, how do they get, how do they get involved with that? How do they, uh, get executed with that?
Who, whoever it is, whatever, whichever Sovereign Moor, government official, which is you, is, is, is claiming that land and has use for that land, you're going to implement that from both the fiduciary for the people and then for the government and then for the individual. Okay? And the individual and the people is pretty much the same. So, the documentation is, is just like we just stated. Lien.
I know what I'm, I'm talking about. Let's say, uh, there's a foreign, there's a, uh, an El Bion son saying he's claiming that land and we go through this process.
Mm-hmm.
What is their position in this process?
They, they, they don't, they don't, they don't really have a claim because they're using the documents that you're going to be restating.
I follow you.
You see what I'm saying? And that's been the whole confusion right there. That's been the confusion that Moors have had, but the confusion is no more, because any documents that you did not create are not valid.
Right. So, that's up for they kind of post to deal with that, basically, when that action takes place.
They already know that when, when the original people come to claim the land and we're, we're doing it competently using the system, see, our documents look so much like their documents that the system recognizes them. However, our documents are not in black, they're in blue or red or both. And they always come with a Moorish fiduciary or some, some document on Moorish gov- some court action on Moorish government letterhead. See, it's our courts that are speaking.
Correct. I follow you.
You see what I'm saying? And that's what the purpose of the eight and a half by fourteen affidavit, court action, fiduciary document, title to the land, a lodial title is for.
Okay. So, y'all already have that on the, on the docs, right? On the.
We already have that. All, all, all of that stuff is done. And, and here's the thing, here's the thing, let me say this to you specifically and to you, to everyone that you speak to who is of the bloodline and birthright. They too can produce court documents that, that must be honored as if it were coming from me or, or this Congress. They can do that. You can do that.
Yeah, yeah. I follow, that's why I was, I had a study group to bring them up to the part, because they have no clue.
Yeah.
Some of the Moors have no, they, you know, you know, have no clue, you know, what a, what a writ is, what a, what, none of that is.
You know what? When, this is what we have found, Nobility, we have found that when they're ready for the information, their energy will attract that information to them. If they're not ready for the information, you can tell them all day and they'll never get it.
Well, see, that's the ones, I mean, I've been, I've, I've, I've been down that road for ten years.
Yeah.
Been down the Moors that's coming, they get it, like they, they, you know, like, I, you know, the way I do it.
Yeah.
They're learning, they're learning curve, I knock off at least two years. Once they get the foundation, they're like, oh, I see. And I'm like, yeah, it's already in you.
Yeah.
That's the ones I'm working, I'm not wasting my, there's other Moors teach them the ABC, you know? But these Moors that's coming now, you know, they got skill set and they just didn't know this part of it, you know?
Yeah. Well, listen, Nobility, um, there are some of us, and myself in, in particular, who would, who, who, I'm, I'm always testing the system. I'm always testing our system to see what else we need to speak to in our system. The cell phones that you, that your partner has at, you said it's Oklahoma, the warehouse at Oklahoma?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's at Oklahoma, yes.
Okay. I would love to test the system on that and restate that whole process to receive cell phones here and to begin issuing cell phones here to Moors who will to have cell phones.
Okay.
So, how, how do we get that started? And I know how, I know how we would get it started. Well, the way that we would get it started is to have you all send us any contracts or anything that you have regarding that process. And then we would look over that process and get back to you on that process, you know? And, and this Congress will go over the process.
How would I, how would I get that to you, uh?
You can email it, you can, you can, you can email it, um, if you will to email it to me. Let me give you my email address. Let me know when you're ready.
I'm, I'm ready.
Okay. It's lightbaymorishnation@gmail.com. L-I-G-H-T. Light.
Uh-huh.
Bay.
Uh, at gmail. I'm gonna put it in the chat to make sure I spelled it right correct.
Okay.
Because I am traveling. Uh, did I spell it correct?
That's correct. Um, that's, that's correct. Yeah. We do lowercase L, but that's, that's still fine. That's correct, the correct spelling. If you'll send the application process for the cell phone and any other information about, that you all will to send about merchandise, about washers and dryers, whatever it is, uh, that you have at the warehouse that you will to get out to the people, send that information there and the Congress, this Congress will look at that information. Uh, we, we tend to restate it, but, but you, but, you know, that's how we do. And then we would love to get started on, on getting things out to people, because there are many who, who are, who have, who have a necessity for that, for all of those things. And then where blockchain and, and those things are concerned, um, we're, we're still reviewing that process because we know what it takes, we have the equipment, we just have to do a poll, not a poll, just, uh, uh, ask the Moors at the Congress, how many Moors at this Congress has a tower like that, whether it's working or not?
Okay.
And it, it should, it should be a old, old one, because they, they refurbished and redid some of the newer ones to where they have wireless access. This, yours cannot have wireless access. Yeah, it has to be.
We probably can do a, a presentation of some of these things and.
We would love to watch it.
Actually, uh, see the system, you know, and maybe the Moors that already have the skill set can check it out and, you know, see what it is. It's pretty awesome. But basically, you can run a whole government from that platform, basically everything, processing, everything.
We would love to see the presentment. If you could, we have Congress on Thursdays and Sundays, just like we did yesterday. Uh, we would be happy to have a presentment done during Congress as well. If, if Congress, are you okay with having in, a, 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 a presentment plan? And Nobility, you, who, any, any of you are.
Islam.
Islam. Islam.
Yes, that's, yes, for sure, Islam.
Islam, Jalguvadus Bay, New York Territory, I affirm.
Travis Bay, Michigan Territory, I affirm. Islam, love, Ibn Alabay, New York Territory, I affirm.
Islam. Territory, I affirm.
Islam, Rosetta, L. Belief Territory, I affirm.
Islam. Michael, the one we keep a.
Territory, land of.
Territory, I affirm.
Karima Bay at Virginia, I affirm.
Islam, Musa Jubei, I affirm.
Kalal, Mombe, China Territory, I affirm.
Islam.
Islam. Mahasubay, I affirm. I affirm.
She, I affirm.
I affirm.
Wayne, I affirm.
L. Land of tomorrow, I affirm.
Islam, Chief Justice, Malika Kill Bay, Illinois Territories, I affirm.
Spike. Feroel. Virginia Territory, I affirm.
Empress Nowey, um, and Elisa New Israel Bay, for the Territory, I affirm.
Uh, Justice Light to Jerry Bay, Washington Territory, I affirm. So, we will, we will, uh, Justice, uh, Amzai, any, any, any of the Moors that you're speaking of who will to make a presentment to the people and to the Congress, uh, we would be happy to, to, to hear what they have to present.
Okay.
Okay? And we are a gateway in terms of the banking and the people and the Congress and, and the law wi- with regard to the movement of the items and things of that nature. So, if they're having issues moving the items, we can assist with that and we're happy to do so. All we would be doing, uh, which is something they could do, we'd be happy to, to teach them to govern their own stuff anyway, uh, is just to teach the restatement process, how to restate everything, so that it's, it's under their authority and not under the authority of fiat mongers.
Right, right.
Yeah.
That, that's a big help.
Yeah.
Like I said, before prior to that, we was going, you know, doing a decentralized banking.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Uh, for a while, those things work and then after a while, once you've been exposed to the process, a lot of times that stuff is pulled away because then you have to demonstrate the process yourself. And we're, we're really good at that here. This Congress is really good at that, at demonstrating the process ourselves, with protection, by the way.
Okay.
Okay? Uh, we've done that many times, demonstrating, uh, money instruments and things of that nature, um, and then that gives us an opportunity to see what we need to do with the system so that the system recognizes what we're doing and so that we program the system to remember what we commanded the system to do. So.
So, let me, let me ask you this.
Mm-hmm.
That system, um, for that exchange.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Mm-hmm.
Um, is that kept in a Moorish, uh, quote unquote? I, I, I know y'all print it out, right?
Yeah.
So, it's a physical thing?
Yes.
But is it a, uh, is it a Moorish bank that we, they using? Are we just using the, the, the previous, uh, system?
So, the answer to, that, because that's a two, two-pronged question. The answer to the first part of, of, of is that a Moorish bank? The answer is yes. Then you asked about the system. Is it the Moorish bank using the old system? The answer is no. We, we actually restated the system.
Okay.
And now we're training the system to do what it's supposed to do. And training, as you know, sometimes we'll do a demonstration and the system will be like, huh? What, I, I don't, I don't quite get that. So, then we go back and we say, okay, we're gonna send some direction to this place or that place. It's, it's like, uh, computer programmers do. When they pilot a program and then they work out the, the kinks and, and things, that's all we're doing is, is.
Yeah, there's, there's no need for a bank.
We are the bank. We can print, we.
What I'm saying, I'm saying, what I'm saying, the old system where, you know, you, you, you credit, you go to this bank and you put funds or whatever, you know, yeah.
Not, not really, no. No, but see, here's the thing, we are reprogramming even that so that it can be used. But, but, but while we're reprogramming it, we're the bank and we're issuing the money and things.
I follow you.
That's the way it has to work.
That, that's the fiduciary funds, correct?
That's the fiduciary fund. It's also Moor Sovereign Delarion, but more importantly, any instrument fits that profile when you are the fiduciary for all money, all land, all natural resources. It does, because it does, it, ultimately, it won't even matter which currency unless it's Moor Sovereign Delarion, because that's the, that's the world reserve currency. But any other currencies from any other places, like, like I have, uh, uh, Zimbabwe, Zems, I have some of those, I have some Dinar from other places and Durums and things of that nature, they have to be restated too. And the only way for them to be restated is we have to do it. And then base it on gold and silver here on our land, gold, silver and Moor Sovereign Delarion on our land. That is where we're going with all of this, is we have to restate the money for everybody. That's why we have it.
Okay. So, let me ask you this.
Mm-hmm.
The Delarion is the picture with Dr. Ben on it?
It, that's one of them. There are, there are different denominations, yeah. Uh, it has Dr. uh, uh, Yo- uh, Dr. Ben Yosef on it. It has, uh, Grand Shitage on it. It has Prince Uriel Bay. It has Noble Jirali. Uh, it has some emphasis on it as well. Um, you know, so, uh, and those, those we voted on as a Congress, you know?
I, I, I follow you. I skimmed through the documents, that's why I'm asking, like I've, I've.
Yeah.
Been looking through it a lot. I'm trying to, trying to get up to par, you know?
Yeah. Take, take your time getting up to par, Nobility. Uh, we got time and we're not going anywhere. We're here for the long haul. This is our land. And so, we're just, uh, you know, we're, we're happy to, to assist and, you know, we're ju- we're gonna be here, you know?
Okay, okay. Yeah, the reason why I'm trying to get up to par, that there's other Moors that's, you know?
Yeah.
I, you know, I'm trying to help them get up, you know, so I'm like, you know what? Let, let me, let me get up to par, so, you know?
Well, I would, I would, um, if I may make a suggestion to you and to them, is that they watch the videos that we've done previously, because their true center, the information that's in those videos that came from this Congress, uh, because there are others in this Congress who, who, who brain constantly just hit the target with their information and their wisdom and things. Uh, and you've heard from them today, all of them. Um, I would, uh, uh, I would suggest that they go back and just, just take some time to, to, to make that a college course, as it were, a university course or a doctorate course, and just spend some times on a, you know, whenever they have time and go through those videos that we've done previously. Uh, you can tell by the way the numbers change from our first video. Uh, you can tell by the way the numbers changed from our first video to the second video and the third and the fourth and fifth and so on. That there was some, some shadowing and we know why that, why that was done. It was, it was, it was for the, for the good of the public. Uh, so that people wouldn't get scared in hearing the things we were saying. But our first video went viral and had fifty-one some thousand views or something like that. And it was going up and going up until there was a need to cover the information until now. You know?
Right, right. That's why I made the, uh, the Roku channel for stuff like that. So they can't block it because I, I got a relationship with Roku. They, they-
We didn't mind them blocking it. We didn't mind them blocking it. Yeah, because, um, there is, because if you, when you listen to some of the court actions we did, those court actions would have scared the average bear. But we did them anyway and we see them working already. You know, for example, we, we did a court action on the subject doing business with Donald Trump. So he couldn't go in for another term because he still had that to deal with. And, uh, you know, things of that nature. So we, we know that that's not something that everybody out there on, on the whole earth needs to see. We know that. Our ancestors, our, our ancestors know what they're doing with this information. Those who need to hear the information and those who can use the information wisely are getting it, just like you.
Right. Uh, I got one more question.
Islam.
Uh, for tho-, for those of us that's already, you know, declared our nationality, that must be restated also?
No, you don't have to restate it. Just put the fiduciary document that we have with it.
Okay.
Okay? And the fiduciary document, cause see, a lot of that was done under five oh one C three capitalism and all of that stuff. Some of it, for the most part, was done that way. Now, if, if your spirit leads you to restate your nationality documents, by all means, do it. Uh, our spirit led us to do it even though we had nationality documents that we were demonstrating from. Um, our, our, and our spirit led us to, to restate them and now we have both.
Right, even trust documents?
All of that, yeah. Uh, because when, as you restate them, you're gonna see things in them that you can improve on. Not improve, but update is a better word. Based on what you know now.
I follow you.
You know, yeah.
Islam.
Islam.
Um, listening to Brother Amazai speak and he's sent in a few times about how he has a relationship with something like Roku. Um, well, it, it's, it's, um, you know, a little bit of disturbance listening to that. Because we all are the Roku, um, CEOs and the CFOs of that, that corporation. Because it's all been nationalized in the ethers. And when we did the, the, um, the bankruptcy and the liquidation for the corporate United States. Um, we've taken control over all of that. So, um, it's just something I'd just like to suggest that you start minding how you refer to your, um, what is the word, your, your resources? How you refer to your resources? And don't give, um, away your resources by how you speak about your resources. And because you are that relationship, because, uh, the Roku has to be restated. That whole contract has to be restated. And, um, because you, like all the rest of the Moors, it's a resource that we all have, um, access to. And so, um, that's just something, you know, I just want, desire to point out. Cause, um, I, I've been listening to your, your statements. And so, um, once you start to understand that and, and, and you, you become that and know that you are the resource. Um, I think I, was it you or the other Moore I said this to yesterday about, um, the contract and negotiating it? And allowing somebody to renegotiate the dolarium for, um, cannabis? And I said, well, if you desire someone to, um, negotiate your, you, well then by all means. But that's not how we operate. We don't desire someone to negotiate our being. So the dolarium and all resources are we. So we don't desire someone to negotiate us. That's why we don't have no one represent us. We present ourselves. That's why when we say certain words, we choose and desire to stay away from certain words. Um, because of the spells that are being cast at those times. And so, um, so when you, when you start to see yourself saying certain things, after a while, it, it will start to not hurt, but it'll prick your spirit, say, oh, that's not the right thing to say because I'm casting a certain spell on this sit- situation. And it's not, it's not the, the, the thing to do. But cause, um, I desire for it to be what it is as far as the resource that we all are. And Roku is definitely one of those resources. As well as the cannabis, as well as the re-, the warehouses and everything else in between. And that's something that, um, Emperor's Life has stated umpteen times and I'm going to camel back off of that. Even in your casual conversations, mind what it is, how you state things. Um, so when you stated how you're, you're looking to assist other Moors around you. Um, you know, iron sharpens iron. So when you are speaking and dialoguing with fellow Moors, um, when they say, oh, well, he has this or, you know, this troglodyte that, or whatever, what have you, you know? Once you start to hear other people say certain things, like, oh, well, that's why I'm not supposed to say that. Because now I'm giving the authority to somebody outside of myself and that's not the way it's supposed to be. Because we are the authority and, um, that's, you know, I have to mind my words. Islam.
Islam, well, I, I appreciate that, but I, I'm not one of them, uh, the Moors that, that's not well-studied. And I did, you know, re-, basically restate it. That's the terminology, but I did do that. And, uh, I, I get what you're saying with the terminology. I get it. I understand it. You know, I know exactly what you, what you're talking about. Uh, and I appreciate that, but I was just having a general frank, I, I know what you're saying, but a frank conversation with that. But I get what you're saying. I appreciate that, sister. I will mind me, when I'm in this venue to do that, uh- More, but I, I'm, 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 I'm way past that, you know, with the, I'm a seven twenty Moore. I say that, you know, three hundred and sixty in the physical, three hundred and sixty in the external. But I get what you're saying, sister.
Islam.
But I will mind my jurisdiction in this platform though, but I get what you're saying.
Islam, um, Emperor's Life, if I can-
Cause I came, cause I came in the world as a Moore. I didn't come at the, in the world as nigger, black, colored. So I get what you're saying completely.
Islam. Islam. Thank you, Islam, um, for, for that. Yes, Justice King.
Um, it, the Emperor's Angel Bay, if I can get her to camel back for a minute on the topic that she just covered. Because she said something that sparked my interest based off of a prior conversation. And, and if she could just uphold that measure a little bit more so that we could, I can personally get a better understanding. Because she said something about not, not taking a piece of us and, and negotiating it because we are-
Okay. Uh, if I may, I don't want us to get off of the commercial piece because that's what this was for. That, that conversation, we, we will have that on Thursday. Um, if you'll be at Congress on Thursday. Because, uh, Justice Amazai, he has, I know he has things that he's doing. And I know that the Congress has things that they're doing as well. And we, we wanna honor the time of everyone here. Um, so we'll have that conversation on Thursday because this, it's important. Um, with that being stated, Justice Amazai, what are the next steps from your perspective on moving forward?
Uh, get you that information, get, get Congress that information on how we do it so we can proceed.
Okay.
Also, uh, the Moors, uh, including my partner, we're gonna restate everything.
Islam.
Moving forward, that, that's what we're gonna do because that's the whole purpose, to have these national products. And we were, we was looking for a vehicle to actually do that. We was gonna go a different way. And I saw you on a video with the brother when he turned, uh, when he, he, uh, he amended affidavit.
Yeah.
We was gonna go that way.
Yeah. Yeah. Uh, and, and-
So I study, I, I really study. Like when I look up some verses, uh, a group of Moors doing something, I go through all their stuff.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, that's, that's why, you know, the elders like me, but most Moors don't do that, you know? But that's how I know about it, you know? So we was gonna go, I was gonna go that way anyway. I just was confirming and show, I like to show other Moors other example of what I already know how to do.
Yeah.
Which is in my spirit.
Yeah.
And what we can do, you know? And then when I saw that, I'm like, nah, nah, I think I need to gravitate to the sister. Because she was explaining to the brother a different way to do it and I was like, that's it right there.
Yeah. Yes, we do everything like that. And we, and, and we encourage all Moors to, to, to treat their estate the same way. Everything that they have is already theirs. They can keep it. It just, it needs to be properly put into their estate and into their trust and, and possession.
Islam.
Yeah, that's, that's the way we was gonna do it through the temple. We was gonna, you know, do it, uh, through the temple like the brother did. That's basically what we was gonna do.
Yeah, and you can, you, you, you know that you are the temple, so you can do it through your own selves and your own. And, and then you're also, if we may, if we may say, humbly say, you're also a part of this government and Congress also. You and everyone who chooses.
Y'all heard that in your videos a, a lot of times and, you know, that's why I like y'all, you know, Moors. I would talk to other Moors and they, it basically, I've, I've heard this several times. We're not leaving a Moore out.
Not one. Not one. We're not leaving, not one. You, we're all one and we all doing this together. Because the estate is too vast from, it, it, we all have to do it. We all have to govern. So any authorities that I have, you have already. That doesn't have to be bequeathed on you by a, a five-year class. You have it already. It's in your blood. Just use it.
Yeah, yeah, I, I understand totally. I understand that.
Including printing dolarium and including giving dolarium to others and all of that. So, yeah.
Oh, I, I understand every day. Like, like I said, I'm up to par. I just, you know, learning y'all, the way y'all, you know, the way y'all do it.
Yeah.
Um, that, that's it. But I'm up to par with everything.
Good. Well, if there's anything, uh, let, let's, let's, uh, let's plan, oh, Emperor Cynthia, go ahead. I'm sorry. I apologize. Go ahead.
Um, Islam, uh, Noble, uh, my consort and I are, we're combing, we're combing through the forty documents. And, uh, what we're both marvel at is that those forty documents that we've been encouraged to put on the public record for our trust. Uh, it's been a, it's a, it's a paradigm, uh, shift. So we really get to see in black and white, or excuse me, blue and white and red and white. Uh, where our place is on the earth and it, and it, it instills a certain confidence to get this job done. So, uh, I encourage to get the forty documents on the public record. And, uh, like we're all trying to get that foundation, just like building a house. If the foundation is, isn't there, then, you know, the building is weak. So, um, that's my encouragement to understand how we do, what we're doing here. And where you stand in this, this world of commerce and, uh, and our own, uh, our own, uh, nation. Islam, I yield.
You know, Emperor Cynthia, I so thank you for that. That's why I'm so glad the Congress is here. Because some things I, I just, um, I know to say them, but I, sometimes, uh, we're, our thought process is going in this direction when it, it, it has to add all the other directions as well. That would actually be our first encouragement, is what Emperor Cynthia just stated. Is to pu-, is to look at the forty documents and put them on the public record for yourself. Create them for you and for yourself. So that you know in your soul and your spirit, as well as the public knowing. And those that were previously doing business as officials, governors, presidents, uh, chiefs of police and all of that. So that they will all know too that you know who you are. Those forty documents, we encourage all Moors to do them. And in fact, there are some processes that we do that, that those documents really should be on the public record before you do them. Such as the currency controller documents. See, when you start talking about money and moving money back and forth. Uh, that, that, that is, uh, uh, money movement is under the authority of current, of the, well, they used to call it the Comptroller of Currency Office and all of that, which is not a real office. We're actually, all of us are, are currency controllers. That is one of the forty documents that we encourage all Moors to put on the public record. That you are the currency controllers. That way while you're printing, you can print out all you wanna print out. And no one can say anything to you about that in terms of, uh, your ability to do so. Because you're also looking at competent use of those things that you print out, knowing, uh, your authority. You know? So we encourage everyone to do that, Congress members as well, Islam. Cause those, those forty documents, they, they really are, that's a, that's a tight, tough package right there. And that's something that you can do, you, no fiat needed. You know? So with that being stated, uh, Noble Phoenix, you had something that you were gonna wait until, uh, Noble Amazai be, uh, finished his statement. We will to hear. If you're still, yeah, I think I see you still here, present.
Is there a cer-, Islam, is there a certain section that I need to look for, for the forty, for the forty documents?
Um, we, we'll show you right now on screen. If you, if you'll just look under our videos on YouTube. Uh, when you go onto YouTube, and I'll just do it on the screen here really quickly and show you where the link is. And it's under evr-, almost every video that we have out there on YouTube. Uh, let's see. If you go to Light to Jerry Bay page on YouTube and go under, click on, just any, pick any one of the videos. When you go under the video here, it will say, show more. You click on more. And, uh, there'll be a link that says, link to documents. Here, there's two sets of documents here. The first link to documents, it says, many of the documents are scripted in our national language, which is ancient English. You click on that link and it'll take you to the forty something documents. I'll go ahead and put the link to those documents, uh, in the chat as well. So that you can see what those documents look like.
Okay, so Islam.
Here, let me put that link. Let's see.
Islam.
Islam, Nobility.
Islam.
Islam.
Yes, I just seen something very interesting on your YouTube.
You have analytics up there.
I have what?
Analytics.
Yes.
Yes, it shows analytics on YouTube. What they're trying to do is signal to you to monetize your own stuff.
And we will, we're gonna do that in gold and silver.
Yes, that's what they just sent you. Cause that, that analytics, what it is, is like looking at the stock market.
Yeah.
It's like, it, that's what they trying to say to you now to do. Cause see, I see right here your storage and all that. They lowered it down. Right? And then on your Google, cause all this is connected to your Google here. This is for your analytics, even what you post on here.
Yeah.
Okay, on Drive. And when you look into analytics, you can actually monetize it and make it whatever price you, you so desire well to do.
Yeah, I saw, I saw that. I, I've been looking at it, uh, but, but we're, again, it is our job to, um, map gold, silver and moris savant dolarium to that. So that, that's what we're, we're going to do before, you know? Uh, we know to, to just go ahead and work on the mapping, proper mapping of whatever it is that we're doing. Um, with regard to our finance. We're, we're, we're absolutely not going to, to, to use fiat. So, so we're just looking at mapping it from the treasury to each avenue of finance. Because we know we have the authority to have, you know, multiple streams of revenue. Uh, but we will to do it our way. So we're being patient and just waiting for that to, to take place. Uh, here is the link, hopefully, and, and if you all would test this link to see, uh, if it's the right one. Just a moment. Just a moment. There it is. My computer is a slow one. Okay. Uh, there's a link. If someone would, would test that link. Especially the older documents. Yes, indeed, yes, indeed. Uh, so those are the documents right there. Uh, thank you, uh, Empress. And just, just, just make them your documents. Justice Howard, we have not muted you. In fact, the whole, uh, the whole thing is open. I didn't even put it in lecture mode. We normally put it in lecture mode, so you should be able to start six. Uh, let me just go to where you are. Yes, it's even, wait a minute, let me see. Try now, Justice Howard. It's saying that you're not muted, actually. Let me go to the meeting wall. To show that, because we're, we're not doing that. Some, that's, that's not a, we don't, we don't just, let me see. See, you all should be able to see this on here. Uh, see, Justice Howard and Empress Shasha are both unmuted on here. I'm not muting them.
And I'm unmuted, just to state that, Ha, Justice Howard was showing unmuted. His ha, there's a hand up, there's a hand up in the, in the box, but, uh, he, it's unmuted, it shows.
Yeah. I don't, so I don't know, um, I don't know why it's not working, Justice Howard. Um, is that you?
Your cell phone, your cell phone could be muted versus you being muted, um, on the, uh, the app.
Yeah, we're, we're hearing someone, we're hearing someone explain that to you, Noble Howard.
So you may wanna check to see if your phone is muted.
Uh-huh, okay. Uh, so now, uh, Justice Amazite.
Islam.
We want to thank you for the time that you have given us today and for the insight and the wisdom, uh, that you have, have given us particularly about the Moorish Empire books, as well as the, the, the cell phones and the, the warehouse and, and the Moorish business that's happening out there. Because, you know, it's, 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 for us, it's like we have, if we have more money than we, we can spend in any lifetime. Now we have to, to find ways to spend it. And to me, this is the ancestor's way of saying, there's a way to spend it, you just have to nationalize everything. And, and as it turns out, you all are nationalizing the things. And, and, and looking for someone to buy the things. We are both, we, us coming together like this, uh, and continuing to meet and talk and hash this out, so that we can get the items out to the people. And so that those who have the items can get their money and their gold and their silver and, and anything, whatever else is being exchanged here. Uh, and the knowledge and the information on restating and the support, uh, knowing that their government, they are government just like we're government. That to me is, is worth the weight in gold of this whole Congress.
Islam, yeah, de- definitely it is. Uh, we, we got a couple families that's gonna relocate. And we was doing that so we can, uh, cause a lot of Moors, you know, displaced and whatever. Uh, the plan was prior to meeting y'all guys, what we was gonna do is we was gonna set up, uh, a community of Moors and, and govern ourselves. And then we was gonna be like, hey, this is what we did, this is the example that we wanna be. We did it, now we're gonna go in another location and do it. So that's basically what, what the whole program that we had going on, that, that's what we have going on.
Well, you know, that's interesting because we were actually gonna do the same thing. Is just continue to, uh, e- even eventually start traveling around showing m- communities of Moors how to restate everything.
Okay.
And then giving them the banking piece as well, you know? Because that's necessary as well. You know, all Moors have a trust. They have a trust, the people have a trust that they can pull from to get things. We just have to link that trust to how, to where, to the energy that those resources are, are coming from, the energy. For example, yes, I have a trust that's a hundred million dollars, but I'm also working in or, as, as justice and as, you know, as a justice among justices and as a banker among bankers and as a, as, as a judge among judges, a governor among governors. So I'm actually earning the money that's in my trust, earning the right to use it, you know, the, a certain way. So, I think that, you know, cause we, we all have to have a productive hand. We have to have a productive hand. And this Congress knows that very well, because we've all been productive. And now we're starting to pull from our trust. And, and I know that us continuing to meet and come together in this manner. And then any others that you will to speak to the Congress, uh, because we would love, and we say, we say speak to the Congress, but we really mean we're just kin connecting with one another. Um, have them to come on either Thursday or Sunday and we'll pre-plan it so that the following Thursday or Sunday, they can do a presentment.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Cause our, our original plan was like, like right now, you know, I, I, I drive trucks.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, the Moors like, hey, Amazite, you do, you do great work. I'm like, well, if, you know, if I had a means to not do this, then I can do better work, you know, more work.
Of course.
I can actually, you know, cause I'm multi-talented also, uh.
Yeah.
You know, so, you know, so this, this works, this, this, this definitely works on, on all fronts. Uh, what we was privy to and now we have this. So, like I said, it's just Moors, um, we overstand and understand we won. These Moors that I'm, uh, that I'm dealing with, they overstand and understand. They didn't get that, even Moors that been in the temple.
Mm-hmm.
Um, they're, they're relearning things cause of the way I presented, because they come from the perspective of not knowing, you know?
Yeah.
Like the sister was talking about earlier, they come from that perspective. And I kinda bring them into what, how can I say this? On their level of understanding and then I bring them to the Moors level. So, when they come to a platform, they, 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 they know what's up. But, you know, a lot of them really don't know. So, uh, I'll give you an example. Uh, when we dealing with exercising or defending our birthright, when I found out and me and Arvy Bay sat down, these, uh, Moors, they're sending, uh, a writ out or whatever.
Mm-hmm.
Stateing their position, right?
Mm-hmm.
But there's no executing order. And we was like, what, wha- what's going on? So, there's a lot of Moors with a L of Bay just don't know what's going on. So, I've, I'm in the process of cleaning that all out. So when they see what y'all doing, it makes sense.
Yeah, yeah. And we will to, we will that as many as possible know what, what this Congress knows. Yeah. So, if, if, if we, if, uh, if any of the Moors that you, um, are, are connected with, will to have them, uh, something like this where the Congress shows our processes to them specifically, we're happy to do that also as a Congress.
Okay, great, great, that, 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 that works.
You know? So, uh, eve- even if it, uh, for, for this Congress to do it, uh, we would prefer that, that it be at least ten, at least ten Moors to come on. And we'll be happy to just, any questions they have, we'll show the process. And, and of course, it's free, it's free of charge unless they wanna send DeLarium. That's the only thing we accept is DeLarium, um, for that. And that's something they can print at their domicile, you know? However, uh, if you have at least ten Moors who will to come on and, and, and know any processes such as restating the tax assessor office. Restating the, the driver license.
I think, I think we gotta restate every, restate everything. Because we have a system, like you see how we talking right now on, on this platform?
Mm-hmm.
What's happened is a lot of Moors don't know, like they're, they're pulling from like any platform. They pulling from your CPO, CPO.
Yeah.
So their data forming, and so like, like let's say we on this, this call like right now.
Mm-hmm.
This whole time, we could've been gaining or earning or whatever, farming crypto.
So, let me, uh.
The whole time.
Yeah, I, I see what you're saying, I see what you're saying. What you're saying is because these computers are on and we're doing activities over the computer, that energy is being farmed. I get that.
Correct.
It's our energy, the, the only difference is because we've restated all of these platforms, our energy is being reaffirmed back to us.
No, no, I, 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 I get it, I totally get it.
Yeah.
I totally get it, I totally.
That's why we print money, that's why we print money.
Right, right.
That's another reason.
That's what I'm saying, I, that, that, our system was like that. And we turn around, we, we would get what we need by, with that process getting away from fiat. But I, I, I overstand, understand, I'm not like, you know.
No, 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 I, we, we, we don't, we didn't take that personally. In fact, that was a great piece of information, because some don't know that. That it is our very energy of meeting together, and we talked about this in our Congress. The energy of us unifying and just agreeing to come together to talk to one another on these platforms is a source and a resource that can be monetized by what we're doing.
Islam.
Islam.
Islam, it sounds like, um, yeah, it sounds like, uh, in, in the previous era in the business or the commercial industry, if you would just bring some people together, eh, you know, over lunch or dinner or whatever, and have a conversation about whatever it is your business endeavor is, you could write off that, you know, that meal or that, you know, whatever it is that you were involved in.
Yeah.
And, and meeting that.
That's what I'm saying, they, they, all that's going, but all that's going on with, 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 ev- every time like they're tell you, go live, you could be a content creator and, you know, you get X amount of dollar or you screen this. They not telling the people that they're, they're, like they getting advertising funds and also their data forming, yeah, and forming crypto at the end on all these platforms, no matter what it is.
That's why our, that's why our numbers.
That's why your phone, that's why your phone always dying.
Well, and that's why our numbers look so low for the amount of information we put out there. They make our numbers look low because low in terms of views, because we have not allowed them to do that. If, think about this, if only the ones who give them fiat where they bump their numbers up.
Right, right.
That's why our numbers stay, that's why I told the Moors, just ignore those numbers that you see on YouTube, they're not real.
They, they not, none of them are.
None of them are. We even know, know, you know, major platforms that we look at for information where we know they're giving t- and this, this, this figure blew my mind, n- it didn't blow it, it just expanded. I was thinking, what are you doing? Uh, where they needed something like two or three thousand dollars to keep their YouTube channel up. And I was like, who is doing that? Who's doing that?
It's free, they, 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 they playing games.
It's free.
I know, I know, I know who you're talking about.
Well, we not gon', eh, yeah, we not gon', we're gon', we're not gonna, we're not gonna call any of that out because they're not the only ones. It's others that's doing that too.
Right.
And we just refuse to do it, so they try and make our numbers look, no, we don't care. We know the information is getting out way far out there because of the number of contacts that we have coming back to us. So we're not worried about that, but, but we know what you're saying about that farming and all of that and trying to get as much energy and fiat and loot and crypto and all, we get all of that just from meeting, just from people meeting together. Isn't that something? Look how valuable our energy is. Look how valuable our unity is. I knew that was going on, but I wasn't gonna, I, I, I was just like, just ignore the numbers. And some people, some people will not look at a video that's less than a certain number of views because they just assume that because it has low views, they're not saying anything. Not knowing that that's the process behind the views.
Well, they do that on Instagram. I, I'll have a thousand people and I know, cause I look in the chat and it's active, but they'll only show like fifty people in there.
Yeah.
So, you know, trust me, they've been doing it for years. Like I said, I had a hundred and eighty-five K followers on Instagram and other platforms. And they just dismoldage, they say, nah, he's too influencing these Moors, you know, to wake up. So they did it, so I got a new account. So, uh, it, it's picking up. So I g- I get exactly what you're saying. I'm from, I've been a content creator for like sixteen years.
Yeah.
So I get it. But, uh, uh, Islam, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
All honors to y'all, what y'all doing. Uh, this is a beautiful day, all the pieces coming together.
Indeed.
And, um, I, um.
We thank you for restating, Nobility, we thank you.
Well, I had to do, I had to do my research before I stepped to y'all though.
(laugh) Yeah. Yeah, Empress Shasha, really quickly, Islam.
Yes, I, and this is a question, actually Howard, I typed it in the chat. Howard has the question for Justice, um, Amazite. How do you fuel your truck, tractor trailers? That's a question that he specifically has.
Diesel, i- 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 is, is diesel, but, uh, right now, uh, I got rid of my trucks, cause, uh, I took a hit. So I'm where, I, I'm contracted with a company, I'm not as, as an employee. I'm contracted with the, with the company and I use my EIN th- through there.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so the company, uh, they buy, I used to buy diesel and defuell. That's what they use in, uh, so-called America. That, that's what they use.
I have a brother who has a trucking company in Atlanta. And right now.
I'm four hours from Atlanta.
He has five trucks that work for him. He's, he's actually my biological brother, Keith Ritchie. Um, he used, he, he retired from FedEx about probably four years ago. And now he has a trucking company there. And he's in the process of, of, of waking all the way up. But, uh, he is definitely one of our resources on our list as well. And he's, he's willing to do the work.
Oh, I got, I got twenty-two years, uh, driving professionally.
That's awesome. Uh, all of that is, and, and see, we're gonna be, and like I told my brother Keith, that, uh, that, and he, he didn't believe me when I told him, I told him about a year and a half ago that, that those who issue CDLs are gonna stop issuing them. And, and those are gonna be coming from, from us. And he didn't believe me, but they've already started to slow that whole issuing of them down, you know, and start taking, taking some of that away, you know, uh, through attrition and some, and other mechanisms, so.
Well, that's, that's good, cause I need to restate my.
Well, you, you better restate it, and it's good, it's valuable, it's valid. And the restated one should look almost exactly like the one you had previously, except it shouldn't say state of, or it shouldn't say, it should just say, if it's, if it's a Georgia one, it should say Georgia instead of state of. And Georgia should be in blue, and then you put the Georgia flag. And then you put this flag right here, let me just show you really quickly, cause this is important. You see this?
And I got one, one quick question there after that.
You see this one where the stars are on the right? Like Prophet Noble Juali had photos of him with this flag? Uh, the one that's on the screen?
It hasn't changed, Empress, the screen.
Okay, I get it. Uh, thank you, Nobility. Uh, let me make sure, uh, why is it not showing? Cause it is certainly on my screen.
Now it's there, it's there now.
Okay, good. Make sure that that flag is somewhere on there, cause that's a commercial banner for Amity and Commerce. That's, that's, that's ours. No, Prophet Noble Juali, you, he, you have photos of him holding this one with the stars leading the way, because we use the cosmos to lead. And the stripes were on the back of the Savior, remember, by his stripes we're healed and all of that. The stars, the stripes were supposed to be on the back, not the front. That's why this flag is impo- is, is important for your CDL. Uh, and you print it out.
Oh, you need to park?
And you restate the number, so the number's the same, it's just in blue or red.
Okay, okay.
Okay? The number's the same, cause see, tho- all numbers, and, and that you will see when you look at those, excuse me, those forty documents. The fiduciary document out of those forty documents said- The fiduciary document out of those forty documents says that no matter what color the ink is, no matter whether the letters are capitalized or not capitalized, numbers, signs, sigils, sounds, everything belongs to us. We're the fiduciaries for all of that. So, no one can claim those numbers but us because we create them.
That's in the Google Drive also?
That's in that link that we put in the chat of, of those forty something documents. Just take the time to go through those forty something documents. And if you, you, you in a study group or, or however you all do it, and then restate those documents for yourself. Put them on the public.
I got one more, I got one more question because we realize, uh, transporting cannabis, uh, through th- them guys, right? I'm gonna just say th- them guys, right?
Yeah, yeah.
You can go from state to, state to state only if you're going farm to farm with a not-for-hire vehicle to transport that. So, uh, how do we do it?
Our CDLs are federal. They're, they're good in all fifty states.
Transport cannabis?
To transport anything and anyone in commerce. That's why we're pointing to this f- flag right here. And it would actually do you all some good to put that flag somewhere on your conveyances as well. Okay? Because that's gonna indicate that, yes, you're doing commerce, but you're not doing it under any other, uh, you know how when you're, when, when you, when your truck has CDL license numbers on the outside and different other type of numbers? DOT numbers, rather. Just somewhere down there, small, in a small way, a sticker or something, something that you print out on your printer, just put that flag in a small little conspicuous place in the corner, somewhere near those numbers. Um, that, and those numbers on your conveyances, on your trucks and things should be in blue, not black. Should be in blue.
Do we have to restate them numbers?
The, just paint them blue. And then what you, the restatement of them is gonna be a lien, a levy, and a bond.
Well, what, what if you get in a brand, you know, getting a, getting another truck? What is the process for that? Like, let's say, you know.
Okay, so a lien, levy, and a bond. And those numbers, whatever your, um, your, your co- commercial number that you're working with, because you ha- you have a commercial number. If you don't have a commercial number, which would have been an employ- employer identification number that you've restated, or your, um, or it can be a state security number, which is, which for us is a restated social security number. Um, you can put.
Like the EIN number?
Yeah, it, you can, you can, you can put those numbers out, out, out on the outside on, in blue. And then that would be ma- making it so that that number, the registration number, and, um, and your, your, whatever number you use, uh, any of those numbers, state security number, employer identification number, those numbers should be restated and put in blue. And you can put them on the outside of the, of the, uh, of the. Because you, because your bond is gonna be attached to that too. Your work bond that you issue for yourself and for your truck is going to be attached to that number. And that way, that, that, that's your bond number there. That's your protective number. That's your insurance number right there on the outside of the truck. And when you put it in blue, it's going to change the jurisdiction altogether. Because theirs are all in black.
So, where do you get the, where do you get the pl- the plates?
We create them. We have our own plates and everything that we issue.
Okay, great, great, great. Okay.
Now, let me say this about the plate. If you choose to make your own plate, all you do is go online because there are vendors online where you can, and it's really automated. It's, it's actually like a automated something. There are vendors online where you can, you can make the plate and then restate it once you get it. If the, if the truck has plates on it already, even if they're expired, you can restate those plates. And then you notify all of the places where those plates came from and all of that. You notify all of them that those plates have been restated and nationalized. Okay?
Okay, okay.
In other words, you'll just send your documents, the documents that you, where you notify them, uh, the documents that restate everything, you just send it to them. That's notification. They will know what that, what that means.
Oh, Islam, y'all ready like we ready.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Uh, Empress Shasha, I believe was gonna say something. There was an Empress.
I just wanted to add in there that when, um, when you were stating DOT and all of those things, that, those have to be spelled out.
Yes.
We don't use the abbreviations or acronyms or anything like that. So, I just wanted to add in because, to make that clear that everything is spelled out.
It should be, uh, Transportation Ministry.
Correct, exactly, yes.
Thank you for that, Empress Shasha.
You are.
Islam.
Islam, Justice Nathan.
And may I share a document that I've restated for the, uh, travel?
Uh, if you would hold that until Thursday, we, we really don't want to overwhelm with the information because it's a lot of information. We will that, that the forty documents be done first.
But, th- this was a document that I seen from two thousand fifteen that was restated. Uh, which is, at the time, they was calling themselves, um, United States Department of Travel. So, we restated it over here on outside in New York Territory as United States for America Ministry for Travel.
Islam, and I, I remember seeing that, that, that it was a letter that went out from them.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Telling people that, that there was a group of people that don't fall under their jurisdiction and, yeah, I remember that. If you could, nobility, hold that for a Thursday, that would be great because this call is starting to stretch and stretch and stretch. And we don't want to overwhelm anyone, uh, including ourselves and for, and we want to give everyone an opportunity to, to take in the information that we've received thus far. Remember, we have time. We have time, everyone. We have time. So, let's, why don't we conclude here and pick back up on the next call, the next Congress? Why don't we do that? Let's just take a deep breath of thanks and gratitude to our ancestors for bringing us together and for unifying us and for showing us that there is a way. Because that's important. We must know that there's a way. And we know that there is as long as we continue to talk to one another. Justice Amazai, thank you. We will let you go at this time and, um, to the Congress.
Islam, everyone, I yield, I appreciate it. All honors to all mothers, uh, everybody, all brothers and sisters, and Islam to the prophet. And, uh, may everybody have a safe and prosperous day and night, depend on times on U.S.
Yes, you too, nobility. Peace. And to the Congress, my honors to you, my highest honors to you. I'm just so honored and humbled and grateful to even be in your company. And for that, we are grateful. Peace and grand rising to everyone.
Islam, are we gonna vote if this is going public or staying among?
Uh, Justice Amazai, I, I, we'll, we'll ask him first. Justice Amazai. Are you present still?
I think it should go public at this part. We said a lot.
You said, you said, you said, what, what was your, what was your, what did you say?
I, my suggestion, I don't think we should go public right now. We said a lot.
Mm-hmm. Okay, well.
It's up to y'all guys, but I, I beg.
Well, see, here's the thing with us. We already know, number one, there, that the numbers are gonna be messed with so it'll make it look like not that many people heard it. Number two, when we put stuff on the public record, it becomes law. And that's why we put everything like this on the public record. But Justice Amazai, it's up to you. It's up to you.
It's whatever the Congress vote. I'm, I'm cool to either way it goes.
Okay, we, we affirm your word. Congress, it's up to you.
Islam, Travis Neil Bay, Michigan Territory, I vote that we put it on the record.
Islam.
Islam.
Islam, Justice Malika Kill Bay, I affirm that we put it on the record as well.
Islam.
Islam. Michael Duwongi Bay, I affirm.
Islam.
Islam.
Earl G. Lloyd L.
Uh, Justice Earl first, please.
Earl G. Lloyd L., I affirm. Please place it on the public record.
Islam.
Islam.
Narajay Bay, Colorado Territory, we ain't scared. Put it on the record.
Islam, Justice Islam Bay. I, I see clarity from the noble. I need to know that he's clear that this is what he wants to do. So, I have, I have seen until he's clear.
Islam.
Islam, this Amazai Bay, I affirm.
He's clear.
And then I affirm.
Then I affirm as well.
Islam.
Gratitude, noble.
Affirm, affirm.
Islam, Rashida's all obey, New York Territory, I affirm.
Islam.
Islam, love is in the law Bay, at New York Territory, I affirm.
Islam.
Justice Shasha Am Bay, Jamaica, I affirm.
Islam.
Islam, Angel P. Vets Bay, at New York Territory, Mother Chief Justice, I affirm.
Islam.
Islam.
Islam, (inaudible) Bay, (inaudible) Territory, land of not, (inaudible) affirm.
Islam.
Islam. Leon from Colorado Territory, I affirm.
Islam.
Islam, Karema Bay of Virginia, I affirm.
Islam.
Islam. Shekri Ali, Kenan Land, I affirm.
Islam.
Islam, Nawa Enelisa, New Israel Bay, Fort Territory, I affirm.
Islam.
I, Anitam, Mahatkaba Bay, Canadian Land Territory, I affirm.
Islam, Empress.
Islam.
Islam, (inaudible).
Hold on, Ju- Justice Akil, go ahead, and then Empress, why not? Justice Akil, go ahead.
Islam, Islam. Justice Akil, Kenan Bay easily L, from Shakka Mekson Territory, I affirm.
Islam.
(inaudible) I affirmed.
Islam.
Islam. Calabasas Bay, (inaudible) Territory, I affirm.
Islam, nobility. Thank you.
Islam.
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 Islam, (inaudible) Bay, (inaudible) Territory, I affirm.
Islam. Justice Peter, I think was also, we, if you would repeat, Justice. Uh, let me see, who knows, Justice Peter.
Islam, is our noble Phoenix still at Congress? We'd like to hear from him as well, Islam.
Uh, is saying that he's here. Hopefully, he.
Islam.
Islam, Empress.
(inaudible) I affirm.
Islam. Okay, uh, Noble Phoenix maybe he may be, may have stepped away from his, because, because we called on him once, uh, earlier as well and finished what he was stating earlier, and we, we did not hear a, a response. So, he may have stepped away. Islam. Uh, have we gotten all of the votes? Islam, (inaudible).
Police Territory, I affirm.
Islam, nobility, and then there was noble who was voting.
Arama, Sharaki Bay, Illinois Territory, I affirm.
Islam, thank you, nobility.
Islam.
Uh, okay. Light to Jerry Bay, I, I am at Earth Territory, I affirm. Islam. There are a couple that we've not heard from who are here, but they may have stepped away from their apparatuses. So, uh, as it stands, we have a majority to include first and foremost. And when we say first and foremost, we mean he, he spoke first because it was he who prompted the meeting. Uh, Justice Amazai, Islam.
Noble Phoenix here. Uh, I heard y'all were asking about me. I was, uh, in the other room and I couldn't hear you.
Yeah.
I've been suffering with some, some health challenges today, um, very severe. So, I've been very quiet today.
Okay.
But thank you for inquiring.
Islam. Oh, Islam, I, I, I figured you had stepped away from your apparatus, uh, for.
I did, I did.
Yeah, we called for you two or three times just to hear what you had to say initially because remember you, you were saying you were gonna wait until Noble Amazai finished and then you were gonna speak, and we were calling for that as well as the vote that we just took. However, uh, if you want to just go back and listen, because we are gonna be putting this on the public record.
Yeah. I heard y'all voting, but I didn't know what it was about, so I didn't feel it would be appropriate to vote and say yes when I didn't know what it was about.
Yeah, oh, Noble Phoenix, we, we, we wish you health.
Thank you.
Healing, 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 indeed.
Peace and love.
Peace and love, indeed. With that being stated, with that being stated, uh, we do have a unanimous vote, uh, to place this on the public record. Uh, we did start somewhere in the middle with recording, so it won't be as, uh, the introduction will not be there, however, this Congress knows. And it's really for the benefit of this Congress and those who will be hearing this because it will go directly to the ears that will to hear it. And those who don't will to hear it, they won't hear it. So, uh, with that being stated, we will meet again. We will adjourn at this time and meet again on Thursday at seven P.M. Eastern. Peace and grand rising to the sovereign, original indigenous, ancient sovereign, holy Congress. And all.
Islam, peace and grand rising.
Islam, peace and grand rising.
Islam, peace and grand.
Islam.
Islam, peace and.
Islam, and law.
Great rise into all Moors, great rises.
Islam.
Peace and love, and thank you.
Islam, thank you too, Empress. Islam.